For the core of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty two P M Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five. This is an open meeting of the planning board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and a general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found on the town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the planning board is continuing using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links to the public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda after they're concluding your remarks. I will invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights and emotions. Please hold all your insights till your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded and for any reason, for any response, please wait until you are yield to the floor, state your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. And the meeting is open. And at this point in time, I will entertain a motion that we accept the minutes from our last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to accept the meetings of minutes of meeting minutes of last meeting. I will ask you to vote. Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimous. Is there any other housekeeping or mail items we should be dealing with at this point?
Not that I'm aware of, but I haven't been down to see the snail mail. Tim, have you been down there recently?
Um, yeah, and there there wasn't anything a note uh last week.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I I'm trying to remember, but I threw away a lot of junk. You know, here notices from other towns and stuff that didn't have anything that was exciting, so.
Excellent. Our first contestant is at seven forty five.
Yeah, it's the hearing, the public hearing.
Public hearing?
For, oh, for the bylaw?
Oh, to talk about the public hearing? The hearings on the the next meeting, the twenty eighth.
Huh?
Public hearing?
You said, post it twice, right? Saying, how much time are you gonna have for the for the hearing?
Twenty minutes. We talked about eight o'clock.
But was that for this meeting or another meeting?
No, that's for the twenty eighth.
Oh. Cause I sent you the agenda.
When?
Oh, you mean that's for review?
Oh, yeah, it says I have scheduled the hearing for the twenty eighth. Ah, I missed that. I thought it was today. Maybe we can have two hearings.
Well, you can, we can talk about the fact, I can tell you what I've done when the time comes. What's at seven forty five?
Yeah, seven forty five, but the hearings at eight P M, right?
Eight P M on the twenty eighth.
Right. So this, so it's seven forty five, Tim, you said you'd just basically give us an update.
Yeah, I'll tell you what I
make it clear to anybody who's attending for that.
Right.
When it actually is.
What it is and and what we've, what we're planning on doing.
That that sounds fair. Uh, well, let me tell you that by the end of this weekend, I was going to put to you an Excel spreadsheet that is sort of color coded. Um, sort of Marlboro versus Berlin versus what the um uh the proponents might wish, and I'm sort of color coding it to account for those things that we would feel to be quite negative or just an absolute no. None of which it seems like, none of which that I've seen so far and thought about um affect anything that that they, any sort of the core things that they would like um. And uh for the ones that um you know, where we we come up with all three parties thinking it's okay, I've um I color coded those in two colors. One of which is looks good, the definition in Marlboro is sufficient and the others looks good, but the definition in Marlboro might need a little more work. Uh, so what I'll do is, you know, I'll send you that color coded and we can talk about that at um at the next meeting.
Um, should should we invite Jane and and Ron to attend at that?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be fine. Sure. Anyway, um, I'll finish that up over the weekend, probably on Saturday and get it out to you. Okay?
Yeah, and I'll I'll reach out to them and tell them when I know what time we're gonna do that.
Um.
They can give us an update at that time, probably on the work that they're doing, because they're starting to dig in on review of the bylaw.
Okay, don't. Okay, and you know what I'll do is I'll put sort of a bullet pointed uh attachment to that, which is, you know, basically reciting for everybody the structure that we want to do, you know, basically looking at undermining zoning. Um, us treating it as an overlay and um oh, yes, I know the other, the other color coding is uh whether we would want to allow something but have it be um subject to special permit. Um, sorry, so attached to the Excel spreadsheet. Um, you know, I I can give you, I can put out a sort of a bullet point description of our approach, and that might be helpful to DMR PC as well. Okay?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. And I mean fundamentally, what that is is getting that Excel spreadsheet out there. Um, getting some, getting an agreement uh that we're looking at the same sort of set of of uses. Uh, and then um and then doing the sort of hard work of how how we how we coordinate those things. My my feeling is that we put them in the overlay zone. And we make some of them subject to special permit, but I will uh I'll put that outline down in sort of bullet point form. So you get the Excel spreadsheet color coded. And uh the brief, you know, sort of half three quarters of a page, uh bullet point outline of how we're proceeding. Okay?
Sounds good.
If somebody else kills some dead air, or I'm gonna volunteer to do something else, so please help me.
Jay, I see on the agenda, uh, we have an eight forty, but in the email that you had sent, you said you hadn't heard from them. Is that still the case?
No, I did hear from them and they said they want to reschedule.
Got it. And and I talked to that proponent a little bit ago, and and so we need to have a little discussion about procedural issues regarding common driveways in their final stage.
When would you like to do that?
Probably then.
Okay.
Well, doesn't have to be that late necessarily, but yeah. What is it? Seven forty three?
We have fifteen minutes.
No, I thought, I thought we were gonna talk briefly about the uh public hearing at seven forty five.
Yeah.
Oh. That's right.
Elderly dog with a uh crotchety disposition wants to go.
I thought you were talking to me.
Not, not this time.
I'm sure you have the same urge to go as she does. At the most inappropriate times.
Yep. Yeah, that's why I thought I'd make the most inappropriate comment. So there you go.
Excellent.
Like, that's going the minutes, right?
It's it's in the recording anyway.
If we use A I for the minutes, it will automatically go in.
All right.
We got one more minute. I got a, I got a um fun fact. We have a moose in the neighborhood.
Really?
Nice.
A moose.
How big?
Uh, pretty damn big, not not like a bull or anything like that, but pretty good size.
Wow.
Hmm?
How back in the swamp?
Coming down between the neighbors, the neighborhood, we're catching them on a trail cam.
Oh, my God.
How often?
Send us a picture if you can to the uh I'd love to see it.
Sure, let me see if I can, I could forward the video.
So that's great.
Well, I'm not driving down your road because
Yeah.
early Sunday morning, I was coming down four ninety five in Littleton. And all of a sudden, nobody else on the road. It was two forty five in the morning. All of a sudden, in my headlights, there's a huge buck.
Oh.
Wow.
The car. And in the one second that I had to kind of like think about what to do about it, bam.
Oh, you hit it.
Oh.
Wow.
Where your car?
It pretty much destroyed the car and your bikes went off and a fire fills with smoke. And it's dark and I can barely even drive, you know, and fortunately I was right near an exit ramp.
Oh, man.
Holy cow, you're okay, though.
Yeah, I mean, the airbags and the seatbelt and all that stuff, and it's a heavy car, it's an X five, and it was remarkable that I didn't get hurt.
Wow.
Wow. Yeah, that happened to my stepson Sam down in the vineyard about uh ten or twelve years ago, and he was in a an old Jeep Cherokee, which fortunately, you know, there's a body on frame and was more powerful than the buck, but yeah, it sounds like you had the same experience.
Yeah, this car.
That's great.
This car took a, took a beating, but.
Yeah, Glenn's sister hit an elk in New Mexico about two years after she moved there, and it totaled her brand new truck.
Yeah, it was unbelievable. There's several billion dollars of property damage done by uh animal strikes.
Yeah.
Well, Jay, one, one, one last thing, you know, that moose is pretty close to your place, so if you're saddling something up early on one of these dark mornings, just be careful what you're saddling. Okay?
Yeah, right?
And the coyotes.
Big old antlers will give it away.
Yeah.
We see them snowmobiling every once in a while, you're coming around a corner in the trail and there'll be a moose standing there, and that's a pretty scary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's uh, it's pretty impressive. Alrighty, so it's few minutes past, we can do our updates if Mr. Wheeler is um inclined.
Yeah, I can tell you, we're just reporting what we've done, so. Um. So we wrote up to hear and notice for the twenty eighth, it's gonna be at eight o'clock. We have to do our article and the citizen's petition. Um, I talked to town council to make sure that the wording I used to give a sense of what was gonna be discussed was accurate, and she got back and said, yeah, go ahead with, she made some small little changes, but so that got posted, it got sent to the surrounding towns, it got sent to Central Mass and the Department of Housing and Community Development, which is required. And it's posted in the newspaper, it should have been in the item Friday, and it'll be in the item this Friday, so we're set to go for the twenty eighth. I had a chance to um chat with Peg a little bit. And did I, I also I may have talked to Kristen too. There was um, I, at the select board meeting, there was some comment about procedurally what can take place with a citizen's petition, and they were um, as we discussed with Peg, talking about the possibility of withdrawing it, but um, a citizen's petition has to be acted on it. You can't have someone withdraw it.
No, that's right.
And so it um, it can be moved to pass over. And I think what Tom has suggested to um to peg is that we probably have our article first in the warrant and explain at that time that uh the reason we were putting ours first was the the simplicity of the article and the way it fits into the current zoning. Um, we really, as you know, decided to modify the definition of um, regional shopping center that's in the definition section to allow the use at Solomon Pond Mall, where the citizen's petition um included language in the village overlay district um, to try to make that change. And in town council felt that our solution was just a little cleaner and probably simpler to explain, so uh we'll, we'll explain that at the town meeting and just make sure everybody understands that it's only at those two places, Solomon Pond Mall and Highland Commons, that the the drive-throughs would be allowed if the article were to pass.
Yeah, and the thought was then that if we um, given the citizens' petitions are usually at the end anyway, um that if we uh had that article and had that vote, then it was an absolute slam dunk to just say pass over the citizen's petition because we already passed it.
Right.
Did you get any sense from Peg whether that was okay with them?
Yeah, I think she's comfortable with that.
Okay.
Um, great. What if it doesn't pass?
Well, then it can be voted, then there could be a motion under the citizen's petition. We I mean, you know.
Yeah.
That, 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 that's it.
So it could potentially be voted on twice at town meeting.
Um, no, I mean, I, I think if the first one passes, certainly won't be voted on twice, but
Sure.
Yes, it could, it could be voted on as a citizen's petition if the first article fails, absolutely.
Right.
Is this a two thirds or fifty percent?
No, two thirds. Yeah, it's not housing related, so.
What is it, fifty percent?
Two thirds.
Two thirds, yep. Yep.
Tim, do you have any idea how heavy the full warrant is?
No.
Me neither.
I don't. I think they were talking about this is articles seven or eight or something like that. Maybe Eloise knows she's in the audience. I, I, I don't believe it's I don't think it's more than ten.
Right, I mean, fall, the special town meeting always tends to be lighter anyway.
Yeah. Eloise, do you know how many articles are on the warrant?
Let's see if she's there.
When I attended the last selectman meeting by over the internet, they said they had eleven questions, eleven articles, and then there were another seven if they had the free cash certified. That was up in the air.
Oh, okay.
Wow.
Well. Hmm.
Cool, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So that's all I have to report.
Great. So I would just say to anybody who is a participant and was attending just for that, that's uh that's the end of that subject. Um, you're certainly welcome to stay and uh if you tuned in for it, uh, we're sorry about the mix up on the agenda.
Um, in regard to other news, the the last time we spoke with Meredith, um I think she, of course, sent us her list based on their list. The proponents out of Ohio, but I we suggested to her that at some point it would probably be important for the proponents to come before the planning board. Um, and it obviously wouldn't be a good time to do it at our next meeting. But maybe the first time we meet in November, should we try to suggest to them that we'd like them to join us and get introduced? That makes sense?
If all goes as planned, they'll be the owners by then, correct?
Yeah, I mean, they were gonna close in November. I don't know how early in November. That was the plan, though. I mean, they
I had, yeah, I had heard November first.
That's, okay.
Yeah.
The only um, the only question I would have about doing it that early is one. Do we want to get out there when I said I'd produce over the weekend? And then do it after that? Um, and then the second thing I would say is we will, it's scheduling it awfully close to when they'll, no, actually, it's a week, week in a never mind, I was gonna say, didn't give us much time after November first, so we meet on the second Tuesday, not the first, sorry.
Well, yeah, and the second Tuesday is Veterans Day, so what are we doing?
Oh, yeah, okay.
If it was, if we were met physically, we would have to cancel, true?
Um, I don't think
I don't think we could do it.
The building would be closed.
Yeah, but
No, but I don't think we could do it um as a matter of state law on the holiday.
Right. Eloise knows the answer to that question, too.
Well, let's get her back here.
You can't, you're not supposed to, unless an emergency situation, hold a meeting when people would not expect to hold a meeting as in a state holiday.
So, and what about um the election day issue? Are we supposed to shy away from those days, too?
Yeah, but that's next year.
Right, but I just, I mean, I'm looking at the calendar and some places in the world have elections, so, so
you all, the cities.
Allowed to do it if, or is it by emergency only, too?
Sort of emergency only.
Okay.
So we need to
I don't, I don't think it's wise to um count on election a year from now, so I think we should defer that decision.
So what are we doing on Veterans Day?
Hmm, that's, yeah. I, I don't think it's appropriate for us to meet then. Um.
But what are we, are we gonna try to still hold two meetings in November? I mean, we've got stuff to tend to. I'd, I'd hate to have us
Yeah, no, 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 I'm, I'm happy to do it another.
Right, it would have to be the fourth because Tim and I both have CPA on the eighteenth.
Right.
And so the fourth is the first Tuesday, correct?
Yeah, can other people make that?
I could make that, but then I would re-enter my second objection to maybe having the
Yeah, I agree.
Proponents in that soon. Um, I could also do and forgive me, I don't have the calendar right in front of me. I could also do the Wednesday of that week of the next week rather than the Tuesday.
The twelfth?
Yeah, I guess, yes.
Yes. That is the only Wednesday that I am available that month, so sure.
Okay, so it's between the fourth and the twelfth.
Twelve's fine with me.
Mister, Mister Chair?
That's fine. That's Wednesday?
Yeah.
Wednesday, the twelfth.
What time?
Same bad time.
Yeah, I think seven thirty is fine.
I, I have a meeting there.
Oh, you have a meeting on that Wednesday?
Yeah. Yeah, but that's, I mean, you guys can meet.
Well, you wanna do the fourth instead?
Yeah, I mean, that either one is fine with me.
Well, you had the problem with the fourth, right?
No, the only thing was that, you know, I, I would then say that we should plan on having the proponents on the mall in at some later date.
Right.
Rather than on the the fourth, on the twelfth, it might have been a possibility, but I don't, I don't think we have to do it on, you know, as early as the twelfth.
Do we wanna do um the fourth and the eighteenth? Instead of the fourth
I think that
Yeah, Tim and I have CPA on the fourteen, on the eighteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, so why don't we do it the fourth and then the regular second meeting?
Which would be the twenty fifth.
Which would be the twenty fifth. And that will give us the advantage that if we get that, you know, stuff out, that is a progression from what I'm distributing over the weekend. Uh, they may have seen that and had a chance to think about it.
Great. You want a motion to cancel our meeting on the eleventh and and have a meeting on the fourth?
Sure.
I moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to move the meeting. Um, all in favor, I'll ask you to vote. Uh, Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye, motion carries unanimous. Fourth.
And Jay, you'll make sure.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Tom.
No problem.
Okay.
So we're up against eight o'clock. Are, we have another person coming in for an A and R date. True.
Yeah. Um.
So this one's for Randall Road, true?
It's eight, eight, ten.
Eight, ten.
Eight, ten?
Eight, ten.
Okay.
Mark Rhodes and Seth.
Okay.
Cause we had twenty minutes for our hearing that never was.
Okay.
So we have nothing scheduled at eight?
Tom, uh, Mark. Mark has his hand up.
Uh, okay. Uh, but we're gonna take it at eight, ten, just in case somebody was tuning in for that.
Right, let's just Mark, what's up?
No, I, I was just saying Seth is not here for my meeting. He's got a conflict for in another town, so he wasn't available. But I believe he's, he may have some other business with you guys, but I'm available, so if eight, ten it is, then that's, that's fine.
If you don't mind.
Not at all.
All right. See you on ten.
You got it.
Um, we've got a few minutes. I, let's have a conversation that relates to
To
a later
Later.
Issue, but this can be a procedural question that's just general, so we, we, we've, we've got this common driveway on Sawyer Hill that was proposed in twenty nineteen. And um the the developers would like to finalize its standing. Um, they haven't applied a top coat. So they would propose to do that. So I don't wanna talk specifically about that site yet, but I, in general, I, I'm trying to remember how we finalize. The theoretically, a bond gets posted if they don't finish. The road and they're issued building permits, which they were. Cause I think, what, are there two or three houses on that now? Anybody live nearby?
For, for, for a common drive, we make them do a road bond?
So there's three houses on that common drive. So building permits were issued and in the bylaw, it says, um, if a, if there's a, a bond. Then you can proceed with the construction of the common driveway. Um, without finishing it, you know, the base coat and all that sort of stuff.
Yeah.
And so this driveway does not have the finished coat. But I'm trying to, I'm trying to resurrect, I guess June, well, no, if it's a bond, it's not gonna be. It's not like we, we get an advance, which we put into an account and hold, it's a bond. So somewhere in our records must be some indication that a bond was issued. So I'm gonna be in the town offices tomorrow. I can try to go through our common driveway file. Cause I think we, we put a lot of those into the same file back when Bob Morrison helped us organize our files. And I'll see what records are in there in regard to that.
May I also suggest that we go out to the proponent to say that we believe that there's a bond on that and. Please confirm this and give us any information and have them do some of the legwork. It seems to me. There's a conveyance, they would have gotten those records.
Right, and when I talked to Jolly earlier, she said that. There. There's an escrow account.
Not the same thing. Cause we can't get our mutes on an escrow account.
No, and she, and it sounded as though the escrow account had more to do with. Some of the. People that owns property on the common drive. So we need to find out if there's, if they have any record of a bond, and I can look through our files, too, but I can.
Isn't that something that would have to be renewed every year?
Not necessarily.
No.
Now, it depends upon the terms of the bond when it was issued.
Okay.
Cause that was quite a while ago at this point.
Six years, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you really have to look at the terms of the bond.
So I will investigate to see indeed whether there was a bond issued.
Yeah, and do go, do go back to them with that question because.
Cause I can, I can reach out to her.
Yeah.
Um, Mister Chair, Mark Rhodes has his hand up again. Mark?
Um, generally towns don't bond common driveways because they're on private property through an easement. And they don't wanna be in the business of, of finishing roadways. So, uh, sometimes in the past, you guys have had some money that stays with the, um. The treasurer, which was from the original permitting process, but it's generally not a performance bond that you have in other situations. So I agree with Tom that put the due diligence on them, make them produce the information at hand. And then, then go from there. Other than that, I, I, I don't, I don't think it's anything you guys should really have to worry about. Because all those, all, all your common drives, the instrument that drives it are legal agreements on the deeds. Through all of the residents, they, they start with your bylaws, but they finish with the deed restrictions and the covenants. And everything else that gets recorded with that.
Yep, no, and, and, and Mark, you're, you're exactly right. I, it's, you know, I was off the planning boards for quite a number of years.
Yeah.
And, um, I was actually surprised when Tim described that requirement on common drives. Uh, so it's a special provision, I guess, of our common driveway, and I understand that it may be protective. Of the, uh, one protective of the, uh, if you will, constituents of the common driveway, but also. We have an interest that it be, uh, accessible to emergency vehicles and so on, so I think. You're, you're absolutely right, and I was like, wow, what, how are we involved with that?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But, uh, yeah, but I think the point, you know, you and I are absolutely in agreement is.
Yeah.
These guys are in the business.
Yeah.
There's a bond, and they acquired the property and, and all of that, they, they, they should have that.
Right, if they, if they want their money back, prove it, you know?
Yep, absolutely.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Well, we're only, you might as well stick around, it's eight oh nine.
All right, so, um. Mark, actually, I have to put you back in the audience and then promote you as a panelist.
Not a problem.
Yeah, for some reason, seven fifteen point two says, in accordance with regulations to be established by the planning board. The board may allow a building permit to be issued with respect to any lot served by an incomplete common driveway. Provided that sufficient bond has been placed with the town by the applicant to assure completion. Provided that such lot shall be adequately served for emergency and commercial vehicle.
No, no, I, you know, I, I totally believe you. All I was saying was, having been off the planning board for so long. Um, I was not, that was not on the top of my mind, and, and I understand why it's there.
Yeah, but I don't ever remember us requiring, like Mark said, you know, so. I think we tried to find other means to accomplish the same end, you know, like we wouldn't issue the last building permit. That sort of thing.
Yep. Well, let's find out where we are and take it from there.
I'll give him a call.
Oh, Tom, you're muted.
Are we ready for Mark?
I think we are.
Did you get me? I gotta see that, I'd like to see them.
Yes.
Oh, okay, alright, got it. But I thought, don't you see all of them? I'm doing this meeting with my youngest son, cause I'm not capable, and my eldest son usually navigates these things.
It's good to have a co-pilot sometimes, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I used to see all you guys, and now he's got it so I can only see Timmy and myself, you know?
That's all right.
Okay.
Okay, what are we, what are you showing us?
Oh, I get it. Um, oh shit, um.
Show it if you want.
I don't have it. I, um, I emailed it to, to Jay.
I have it.
Yeah, can you share that, Jay?
Yep.
Awesome. My New Year's resolution is to get more. Connected with the, these things.
No, it's too late, Mark, now you gotta get AI instead.
Yeah, Mark, it's easier to lose weight and get connected with these things.
And I don't wanna be the one to point out that it's October.
Right.
Okay.
This is the, uh, property that I purchased on, uh, Randall Road.
Hmm, can you see it?
There it is.
The print's kinda small, Mark.
Yeah.
Okay.
If Seth was here, we could blame him.
What would you like to zoom in on?
Um, we got lot A, B, and C on my right. And then you got B, uh, D on the, on my left, which i- it has the, uh, the balance of the property. Um, or the, this four, four A and Rs, A, B, C, and D.
Okay, so here's A, can you guys see my mouse?
Can you zoom in just a little bit more, Jay?
They all meet the frontage and acreage requirements for A and R plans.
So this is A, B in the middle, and C to the left. And then D is way off here in the other side down here.
Yeah. And then the balance of the property is gonna go to my farm.
That's way in back.
Yeah, but famous Wheeler, all the way around the corner. We got seventeen head now with the bulls, so we'll have another sixteen in the spring, and we're purchasing, uh. Eight steer and two bulls, so I wanna, uh, rotate the bulls to keep the incest down.
Sounds like fun.
If you're the bull, I guess, you know?
If we wanna have a rodeo, um.
No, that, well, maybe, but.
Guys, we have to, we have to keep these public meetings PG thirteen or less.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm like, I actually, I do the, uh, zoom on my iPhone and I have the, uh. Plan up on my computer and it, I mean, it looks to me like they are all conforming in terms of frontage and. Surface area.
Okay, help, um, since I can't s- see. To the left of lot four.
If you wanna open it up on your own computer, I, it's in an email I sent to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, I got it.
Jay, yep.
So I know that we're not considering lot one, uh, in this. But dear God, did we approve lot one?
Last meeting.
Yeah.
That's what happened.
Yeah, it's all about the offsets between septics and acreage. The, uh, the septics, the well offsets are very challenging in the town. I, I know you guys know that. But then you still have to fill your acreage requirements, and, uh, we've done stuff similar to this in the past. I know it's not attractive, but it does, it does meet the letter of the law.
Oh, just for purposes of getting the thing going, I would make a motion to approve.
Oh, wait, I have some more questions.
Not a problem. Once a motion's on the table, we can, we can have all the questions we want. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh. The A and I are probable. For lots, what is it, A?
A, B, C, and D.
C and D.
Yep.
On the, um. I don't know if people are taking this down, or if, um. If you, you just want to take it down, Jay, you know, when you do the motion, but it's the plan of land. Dated September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, by Dulles and Roy Civil Design Group.
Um, the deed reference looks like it's book seventy-one, seven sixty-five, page two fifty-seven.
Yep. Do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, now we can talk about it.
So is, I'm. One of these, so of lots that we approved the last time, four, one, two, three, four, right? Is, is it my recollection that three is a lot that had. A hundred foot of, I mean, less than two hundred feet of frontage?
Yeah, the way it goes is you gotta have two A lot, I think there are A and B lots. One lot, I believe, is the, the A, well, actually, the A lots have two hundred feet of frontage. And two acres, and a B lot requires one hundred feet of frontage and four point five acres.
Right.
But you can only have a B lot if there are two, excuse, yeah, you can only have a B lot if there's two As in between.
So if three is a B.
Yep.
It looks. It looks to me.
The one next door, the lot next door, which we don't own, is also a B.
Well, what?
Jay, can you zoom out a little?
Three is, three is a B.
Yeah.
Is an A. But.
I could, I could run out to my truck and grab my plan.
I've got it right here, so D. But D is a, is a B.
It goes BB, from D, it goes B, B. Actually, I'm, I'm dyslexic, excuse me, from, from lot, lot D has two hundred feet.
Well, well, wait.
Okay.
I'm having trouble with. Wait, where's, no, I'm looking at D. D is the first one to the left of four.
Yes.
I'm, okay, now I'm reading it. So you got two hundred and thirty-five feet of frontage, okay, good. I'm there.
Yeah. We're both looking at it from different directions, and I'm dyslexic and I confuse my As and my Bs.
So, so D's. An A, four is an A, three is a B.
Yep.
Two is an A, one is an A.
Yep.
And, and. Well, C is an A.
Yep.
But then. B is a.
D, B is a, B is a, is a B.
He is a B.
Yep.
He is a B. Okay, I'm happy with the frontage then.
Okay.
I'm happy with the acreage.
Yep.
That answers my questions as well.
Four point six.
No, and I'm on board with all of that, as I say, I had the advantage of looking at the, uh, large view plan on the computer, so, yep.
Yeah, okay. I see it now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wanna build the fence for the dog around lot three, the perimeter of rut three?
The, the.
No, around lot one.
The, those, those, those silly little legs, I'm gonna deed restrict that. Nothing can be built on them, and no trees can be cut, so some of those lots will have about. An acre of usable land and, uh, cause I don't want ADUs built back there, and I don't want it cut. And I don't want them encroaching on my farm area, so I'm gonna use that area for a buffer to my agricultural activities.
Mark, is the shape of these the reason that you needed to modify the cutting plan?
No, the shape of these are to fulfill acreage and to get from the, the houses to their septics. And fulfill all the well offsets. It's strictly motivated by border health regulations. Both local and state and, uh, town regulations for zoning. There's got nothing to do with the cutting plan. I, uh, I pulled some area out of the cutting plan, uh, just to start my farm. And, uh, over time, the cutting plan will be finished, and then I'll expand on my farm, and then when the time's deeded right. I'll, uh, come visit you guys for, like I said, my wetlands crossing for my farm to get to my own property, but that's. That's a long ways away. Um, I have a lot of work to be, I have plenty of work to keep myself busy for a lot of period, but. But I have, um. The, the, the area that I took out of the cutting plan, um, I'm gonna make pasture. Because I got Shane's property that I can use and rehabilitate his. And it's, everybody says it's one acre per cow, but it's actually two acres per cow if you wanna feed them grass. So you need one acre for the in-season and one acre for the hay. So, the size of my herd will be. the size of my herd will be defined about the area that I can produce to put them on. Because when you have to buy feed, the the economics don't work as well. I don't know if that, I hope that answered your question.
It does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Do we have any further questions? Seeing none, I'm going to ask you to vote on approving lots A, B, C, and D as approval not required under the subdivision control law. Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. And we have a Form A and we have a check.
Yep, now Louise has the check and the Form A and the plan.
Um, how do we want to get the plan signed? Last time. I'm going up tomorrow, um, so I can grab it. If anybody wants to swing by, they can sign it. I'll have it at the farm. If I can leave it at the stand or something.
Mrs. Mark.
Yep.
Um, cause I was going to say maybe, uh, I can circulate the stuff on the mall and send it to Timothy and maybe over the weekend, sort of Sunday morning or whatever.
That's great. I'd just like to record at the beginning of next week.
Uh, so I can, I can certainly find it. And I'm basically around, Tim, if you let me know when you're coming by, you can just drop by and I can sign it.
Yeah, good. Okay.
Nice, nice. Thank you for your votes and thank you for your support and thank you for your time of being at the meeting.
And thank you for your comments on the other issue.
Oh, that one. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I thought you were talking, I thought you were talking about the college, you know?
No, no, I'm, I told you, I'm trying to keep this PG, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have no further questions about that.
All right.
All right.
Have a good night.
See ya.
Bye bye. Yeah.
So Tim, Tim's gonna have the plan or Tom, Thomas is gonna have the plan?
Tim is gonna pick it up.
And I'll stop at Thomas's and get it signed. And then if anybody's got time to stop by this farm, I'll have it down here.
I can probably come by this weekend.
Okay.
Yeah, just let me, to- tomorrow, uh, Tim, I'm in Boston until mid afternoon.
Okay.
But otherwise I'm around and very flexible, okay?
I, I'm not going uptown till three fifteen, so I won't be leaving there till four probably, so.
Oh, no, that's good because I'll be, uh, I'll be around then. Okay?
Yep.
Excellent. And I'm in Boston tomorrow till early afternoon.
Do we have the proponents for the River Road West P and R?
Uh, Sean was here. I don't know if anybody else in the audience is.
Looks like Kelly's here. She's probably. Yeah, Wheeler? Yeah. Says cornerstone engineering on the drawing. I don't know who that is. Like they've been to us before. Them too, yeah. Right, but who is, who, uh, represents them? Oh, I don't know.
I don't know if anyone here is.
Kelly will know.
What? Can you hear me?
You got anybody else with you?
Sean should be on.
He was. He doesn't appear to be now.
You know why? Cause he, I think he was confused with how you talk. This, the last Zoom one that he did, there was a thing down the bottom where you can mute and unmute yourself.
Oh, no. Did he hang up, hang up on himself? Let me, let me shoot him a text. He was texting.
Oh. Supposedly he is on.
Hmm. Maybe.
Is he the iPhone?
Is he the iPhone?
Yep, probably.
All right, let's see. Sean, is that you?
I'm here.
There you go.
There you go.
All right.
What's his last name? Sean who?
Sawyer.
Sean Sawyer.
Sawyer, okay.
Do we have a plan?
Jay, do you want to share the plan?
Oh, I thought it was, sorry. You see it?
Yep, yep.
Yep. Sent this one to you guys also.
Yep, I got it up on my computer. Thank you, Jay.
So Sean, you want to make your pitch? Tell us what you're doing?
Uh, just putting the house lot in, really. Pretty simple. Just a driveway, house lot, septic system, which was approved by the Board of Health. Um, if that utility easement is what the dri- like the existing driveway is, the house lot will be in the corner. Uh.
You mean the house will be built in the corner? The house lot is the whole lot too, right?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. The house will be built on that corner. The driveway, uh, I don't know how to like. So where it says forty-three point ninety-five in that corner.
Mm-hmm.
That's pretty much where the house will be.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the driveway kind of comes in probably where it says frontage.
Okay, and the frontage on this is how much?
Uh, two fifty.
Two fifty and the surface area of the lot is?
Ee, um, two point three.
It's on there.
Yeah.
Ninety-seven thousand eight twenty-six.
All right, then I, I would make it a motion to approve the subdivision of land described on the plan, uh, Cornerstone Engineering, Inc. Dated as of September twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. And I'm looking on the thing for the, uh, lot. The, um, registry of deeds. Is that on here?
The house number on lot one?
Uh, no, the registry of deeds reference to this parcel of land. Yeah, the book and page for this land.
Oh, actually, I don't know if I sent them to you.
Okay, I didn't see it. Um, well, anyway, I think, um, I can make the motion on that basis.
I'll second it.
Um, the, the book and pages, the book is five, five, four ninety-six and the page is ninety-four.
Where do you see that, Tim?
It's my job, man.
All right, I love it. Great. Okay, so we'll add that to the, um, motion. I guess I would agree with what, uh, the proponents representative just said. This is, this is pretty simple. The, uh,
Yeah. Yep, the lot one has all it needs and lot two has all it needs, so we're good.
And we have a second, right?
Yeah, we did. Yep.
Right, so we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to ask you to vote. Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've
Thank you.
Where is this plan?
I've got the plan.
You have the plan, Tim?
I have the plan, so when I bring the other one to Thomas, I'll get him to sign it and then you can sign it and then we'll have them both done at the same time.
And the Form A and check aware.
Did I get a, did I get the check, Kelly?
No. You didn't tell me you needed a check.
What do you think we do this for free, Kelly?
Say that again?
I said, what do you think? We do this for free, Kelly?
No, but I can drop it off to you in the morning if you want.
Did I, did you, did you do, did you give me the Form A? I think you did.
No, I didn't give you anything except the, I don't think, I didn't unroll those plans from Cornerstone. Would they have had them?
If, if I don't find a Form A, I'll, I'll print a Form A and you can fill it out when you come with the check.
Okay, perfect.
Excellent.
When are you gonna have it so that I need to stop and see you?
Um, it probably won't be signed till, uh, sometime over the weekend.
Okay.
Um, but you know, I'll text you when I, when it's done.
Okay, perfect.
The fee will be
Yep.
What is it? One fifty? One fifty for the first lot, a hundred for each additional. One fifty for the first and a hundred for each additional? Yeah, and we've been interpreting that as if you take one lot and split it into two, you pay two, uh, two fifty. So it's two fifty?
Okay, just made out to the town of Berlin?
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kelly. Have a good evening.
You, you too.
We'll see you guys.
Bye.
What's left on the agenda, Mr. Teach?
Very important topic. It's called the German. Oh. I'll make that motion. I have to be in Boston at six thirty in the morning, so.
I will second that.
All right, motion in a second to adjourn. It's non-debatable, so I'll just take a vote. Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye, and I think I can say good evening because I think this motion's coming through, but go ahead.
Uh, Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous.